I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Howell Township Master Plan, I'm sorry, Planning Board Committee, Planning Board, to order. It's been a long day.
I guess so.
Eileen, please call a roll. Or the opening statement.
Planning Board Reorganization and Regular Meeting, January 3rd, 2019. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 11th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Since we've got some new members and some that are reappointed, why don't you want to give yours?
Yeah, we need Mr. Dorado, Chief Kudrick, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Nash, Mr. Husser, and Mr. Everett will need to come up to be sworn in.
Okay, I'll ask everyone to raise your right hand. Okay, if you repeat after me, please. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States. And this state, under the authority of the people, that help me God. I do further solemnly swear that I will impartially and justly perform all the duties of the office of Planning Board, according to the best of my ability, to help me God. Congratulations.
Well, Brandon, I feel very left out, Chairman.
Did you still need a pen? Okay. I just gave everyone their oath. If they could just sign it and get it back to me by the end of the night, I would appreciate it. Roll call. I have not heard from Mr. Boyle, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, Mr. Everett, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and Chairman Nash.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. If we can all rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance and followed by a moment of silence for all first responders and our troops worldwide and in our country.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, we are going to go into a brief reorganization of the Board. So, Eileen, if you would call, read the statement. We're going to go into an executive session for a couple of minutes and then come back out.
Okay, and then I'll just need a motion to go into executive as well already.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
That was Brian?
Yeah, Brian.
Whereas Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the New Jersey Revised Statutes requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting. And whereas the Planning Board of the Township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statutes 10:4-12, namely personnel, now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Board of the Township of Howell that the public shall be excluded from the next portion of this meeting and that the Planning Board will reconvene in public session thereafter. Be it further resolved that minutes will be kept of the meeting in closed session and the time and circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public cannot be determined at this time. Do you want to do a roll call for that?
Sure.
Mr. Dorado?
Present.
No, just, this'll be a yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
We're in executive session. You want to do a roll again?
If you want me to?
Yeah.
Mr. Boyle, absent. Mr. Dorado?
Present.
We're doing another roll call. Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Present.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Present.
Mr. Everett?
Present.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion for Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Bob Nash for Chairman for this year.
Thank you.
I second it.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is for Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Brian Tannenhouse for Vice Chairman.
Second.
That was Mr. Nacastro.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the position of Secretary of the Board.
I'd like to make a motion for putting Eileen as the Secretary for this year, please.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the Board's Consulting Attorney.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mr. Cucero be Attorney for 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is for the Board's Consulting Engineer. Have a motion, please.
I would like to put a motion to have CME be our Consulting Engineer.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a motion for the Board's Consulting Planner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to have CME be the Planner for the Pla-
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is for the Board's Certified Tree Expert.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put a motion to have CME be the Certified Tree Expert.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a motion for the Administrative Officer of the Board.
I'd like to make a motion to have Eileen be the Administrative Officer.
I second that.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a motion for the Recording Secretary of the Board.
I'd like to make a motion to have Eileen be the Recording Secretary, please.
Second.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And Dorado. Okay. Next is a motion, that should be the 2019 meeting dates.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, I understand that we have a conflict with November 7th or make changes in November?
Yeah.
Making only one meeting on November, and November 7th, and another meeting for the Master Plan on November 14th.
Yes, and those corrections will be put in the resolution.
So, do I make a motion to?
You can just memorialize the meeting dates.
Okay. I'd like to memorialize the meeting dates with those two changes.
Second.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Mr. Chair, just with regard to the next one for the official newspaper, there's not really any decision-making for the Board. I just checked just to confirm, but the official newspaper is selected by the municipality. We don't have an ability to overrule them. I did just take a look in Cox's book also, and confirms what I thought, says the governing body and not the municipal agency determines and selects the official newspaper or newspapers. They cite 40:53-1, so we're just subject to the official newspaper decision of the governing body.
Okay, so we'll consider that item deleted from our agenda then. With that being said, I'd like to have, well, this is a statutory appointment because Mr. Kuzer is on the Environmental Commission. I would like to assign Mr. Kuzer as being the Environmental Commission Liaison to the Board.
There's no motion necessary for that.
Yeah, that's what I did.
These are appointments. Sheet sheet back.
Yes. Okay, again, these are appointments now for the Site Review Committee. I'd like to appoint Robert Seaman as the Chair, Dave Everett as a member, and Nick Kuzer as a member.
No, I think that's reversed.
Site plan is reversed.
No, that's what I got down here.
David and Nick and myself were going to be Master Plan.
Really? Okay. I'm sorry, this is what I wrote down. So let me straighten that out then. For the Site Review Committee, we still have Robert Seaman as the Chairman, and then we have Paul Dorado as a member.
And Chief.
And Chief Kudrick as another member.
Correct.
Okay. For the Site, I'm sorry, yeah, for the Site Review Committee, no, I'm sorry.
Master Plan.
I got my lines backwards here. For the Master Plan Committee, Brian Tannenhouse is going to be the Chair, Dave Everett will be a member, and Nick Kuzer will be a member. Did you get all that confusion?
I got it, thank you.
Okay. All right, so that concludes our reorganization. We'll move right into our new business. So, first up is going to be memorialization of resolutions.
We're still working on that one, Mr. Chair. That'll be ready for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll move on past that. So, the next thing is going to be review of submission waivers. We have case number SP 1052, Monmouth Commerce Center LLC. It's preliminary and final site plan. This application is an application of Monmouth Commercial, I'm sorry, Monmouth Commerce Center LLC as applicant, and Lawrence Katz and Felix Flester as owners seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct an office/warehouse complex consisting of two-story, 85,600 square-foot office building, eight warehouse/industrial buildings ranging in size from 123,600 square feet to 150,000 square feet, 1,156,602 square feet in total, five full movement access drives along Randolph Road, parking for 738 vehicles throughout the site, 142 trailer parking spaces, 266 loading spaces, and six monument-style site identification signs, five along the site access drives, and one at the Oak Glen Road and Lakewood Allen Road, Allenwood Road intersection, on premises known as Block 5, Lot 2 and 3, Randolph Road, Oak Glen Road, and Lakewood Allenwood Road. All right, just so everyone understands, this is simply a hearing about a submission waiver to deem the application complete. This is not any action that's going to be a review of the application tonight. It's only to deem the application complete. Counselor?
Good evening. My name is Merrill Gonchar. I'm a member of the firm of Sales, Commiss, and Gross, and we are the attorneys for Monmouth Commerce Center LLC, the applicant this evening. As you've indicated, the property is Block 5, Lots 2 and 3, and is located on Randolph Road and Oak Glen Road, and the property is in the SED Special Economic Development Zoning District. We have requested a few submission waivers. I would say that the majority of the items that we're asking for, we're not actually asking to be relieved of the obligation to present them at all, but really, it's a matter of timing.
Counselor, usually what we do on these is we turn to our engineer, who will give us guidance as to whether these can be granted.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the submission waivers are specifically enumerated on Page 6, Item 3 and 4 of our December 14th letter. As it relates to the items in 3, I take no exception to the granting of those for the purposes of deeming the application complete. But as it relates to 4A, which is essentially the 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis, typically, it's been our policy to get this information so that we know those impacts. So I would recommend that that item be provided prior to the application being deemed complete.
We have prepared that document, and we're not certain why it didn't go in with the initial submission, but that document is available and will be submitted immediately.
Okay, so if you wanted to get it over to me as quickly as possible, then I can prepare the necessary memo regarding completeness.
Super.
Just please, excuse me, make it go through my office, not Laura's.
Absolutely. Okay.
All right.
To the person appointed this evening to three different positions, we'll get that to you.
All right, any discussion on the part of the Board? We don't have to open this up to the public.
No, no, and then essentially, it would be a motion to grant the submission waivers with the exception of the 2,000 downstream analysis.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Show move.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes, presuming that the downstream analysis is in your office.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The application can't be deemed complete until that.
Without it, and that's why I said that.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next application is case number SD 2847A-2, at Haystack Glen, formerly GS Realty. It's an extension of time. This application of Haystack Glen, formerly GS Realty, as applicants and owners seeking a two, one-year extension of time on the amended final major subdivision approval granted on October 2nd, 2014, on premises known as Block 36, Lot 21, Maxim Sootherd Road. The applicant was previously granted a one-year extension of time on January 5th, 2017, and a second one-year extension of time on December 21st, 2017.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board. Warren Fink here, here on behalf of Mr. Dominic Sermonaro, whose name is on the letter that was submitted with the application for this extension. More to the point, what's really an issue is, in May of 2018, Mr. Sermonaro sent a letter to the Mayor for consideration of dedication, and there was a deed that was proposed also, to dedicate approximately 53 acres of open space, and also the Stormwater Basin to the Township. So, since that was submitted in May, Mr. Sermonaro has not heard back from the Board, from the, excuse me, from the Council. So it's still under consideration, and no action's been taken to this point. So that's, all other engineering work has been completed, and that's why this application's being made for an extension. So, under the statute, you look at the number of units involved and the comprehensiveness of the development. So there are nine units involved here, which have been approved, and as far as the comprehensiveness of the development, there's the nine houses, and then there's the question of the disposition of the 50 acres of open space and the Stormwater Basin. So, it's on that basis that we're asking for the additional time.
Mr. Chairman, I think, though, we'll get to the substance, but I think there's just a threshold issue in terms of the request. It's a request for two one-year extensions, however, the applicant's already received two one-year extensions, correct?
Right, I think the application was for a two-year extension. But, I mean, we understand, I know in the past, the Board indicated a preference for one year, but...
No, what I'm saying, just if you let me finish, is that, under the municipal land use law, you can get up to three one-year extensions, or you could come in and ask for a three-year extension. So I think you only have one more year left. I don't think statutorily, we could give you another two, because you've already had two one-year extensions.
Okay, understood.
Okay. But just for, I know we have some new Board members, the older Board members have heard me say this many times, Mr. Fink is correct, generally speaking, for an extension of time, what you're looking for is that the applicant has engaged in due diligence in satisfying the conditions of its approval. This applicant, I think the only remaining issue would be whether the Township is going to accept the proposed dedication, which it doesn't have to, there's no obligation that the Township do that. Most importantly, however, the zoning on the site has not changed. So it's not as if, if you deny the extension, it would kill the application or anything. It's just they would have vested rights through December of this year, if there were a zone change. And like I said, there's no proposal for a zone change. But what you're looking for, as I said, is that there's been due diligence in pursuing compliance with the terms of the approval.
Does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Any discussion here on the Board?
So Ron, what happens if that third year goes and we're back here again?
Well, we wouldn't be back here, under this. What would happen if, you know, December comes and the Council is not taking any action? The approval is still in place, the approval does not expire, and as I said, the zoning is still in place. So they would still have the ability to pursue the application, but if the Township decided it wanted to rezone the property, they would no longer have any protection, and they would be subject to the rezoning. The extension protects them from a rezoning, which, again, there's no proposed rezoning here, but it would protect them through December. Now, let's assume that the Township Council says, no, we're not interested in acquiring or having, you know, the 50-something acres dedicated to us. You may see the applicant again, they may find the need to amend the application in some manner, or they may just abandon, you know, their rights, but that's the different paths it could take.
And Ron, if they begin construction between now and December 21st of this year, does that negate his requirement, or does that now lock him into being exempt from any zoning change?
If there's, if they get, you know, the approval from the Council to do what they want to do, and they begin substantial construction on the site, then a new zoning probably wouldn't, I mean, they would have recorded the, you know, the subdivision already, so...
And if at some point it becomes obvious to the applicant that the town is not going to move on his actions, and does he have to then, how does he protect himself from the rezoning, or is it?
You can't.
There's no recourse.
I mean, you, after that third year expires, you're just subject to whatever it is the Council's going to do. I mean, if they can't move forward because the Council determines, which it has every right to, not to accept the dedication, the only way for them to protect themselves really is to figure out a different way to do it and come back here for an amended approval, and then all of the timeframes begin anew.
But he has to be substantially complete with construction to be protected?
Well, he would, like I said, he would have recorded the map already. So, once you record the map, you're good. Mr. Chairman, just for the record, can Counselor give the time when you made that
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, can counselor give the time when you made that request to the governing body?
This year?
You said May?
Oh, yes, May 20th.
May 20th of 2018. And what has the correspondence been back?
Sorry, it was May 4th of 2018. And then I know Mr. Sermonaro's made calls, and this is the developer here, Mr. Cementchuk. Would you like, does he need to be sworn in if you want to hear what else has happened?
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please, if you could just get close to the mic and state and spell your name.
Yes.
ANATOL, first name, last name, SIE, MIE, NCZUK.
And you are the developer of the property?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Cementchuk, if you could tell the members of the board, please, what's happened since Mr. Sermonaro sent the letter to the mayor on May 4th?
I mean, we was waiting for a response from council, and I would say maybe the last two months, I made few phone calls to township attorney and
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Clark, and we had discussion that possibly the case will be heard by council in January meeting, and decision gonna be made then. So once we're gonna receive a decision from council, we're just gonna address it and just move accordingly. So there's a few options. Mr. Savino proposed three concept to council, and they have to review it and make a decision, you know, so that's where we stand right now, we're just waiting for, you know, council to review and finalize their decision, and hopefully it's gonna happen in January.
And your application has been before this board since 2014, I believe? Is that correct? 2014?
And pretty much, most of the engineering is done, and it's, we had application review done, and to comply with it, all the deeds are pretty much being prepared, and this is the last part which is actually missing to comply with the resolution. And, you know, we're dedicating big amount of land to the township, so hopefully the decision gonna be made shortly.
Has this come up in council meetings?
Or you've been instructed that? They've been, according to the testimony, they're saying that they've been advised by Attorney Clark that council will be reviewing this in January. Since it's just been a reorganization meeting, I think we would safely assume that the next meeting would be the January meeting that Joe Clark had in mind.
Okay.
So I would think that possibly another call to the attorney, Mr. Clark, reminding him that you'd like to see this on the next council agenda, might be an appropriate time.
Okay, definitely I will ask him to, you know, consider the application at next meeting.
So just curious, if you knew that it was gonna be, a date was given, why wouldn't you ask for a six-month request for an extension, why the one-year extension?
Well, because we don't know what the timing's gonna be, it's been May 4th, nothing's happened.
But you indicated that you got notified that it was gonna be in January?
No, I just found this out today. I didn't know about that, but the point is we're trying to preserve our rights, but also we want to move forward, and like you said, it's been 2014, the final approval, so that could be sitting, just sitting around.
Right, another thing, it depends what kind of a decision would be. If, for example, township doesn't like to take ownership, then we have to see what step we're gonna do, probably form associations, so this is gonna take some time, and I don't think so, you know, six months would be enough, sufficient amount of time to complete everything and, you know, get all the paperwork ready to, you know, file the subdivision map, so...
And it's a previously approved project, so I'm under the opinion that he only, all we're doing is granting him an extension till December 21st of this year.
Is that a motion?
I can't motion, so... I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Dorado? Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, master plan status report.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a little premature for us to have a report for you yet, but next month I'm sure we will.
Okay. That's it, any other reason to go?
We do have a meeting, so
Yes.
Could you remind everybody, Eileen, what the master plan meeting date will be for this month?
Give me one minute. I have my dates here somewhere.
And are we still going to be securing this room for our meeting place, as we have in the past?
That's where you normally met, yeah, I didn't know you met in here.
Yeah, we usually meet, we just usually use that table right there.
Yeah, that's, January 24th is the next master plan subcommittee meeting.
And that would be at 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
Thank you.
And those dates get posted in the paper along with our dates, so they will be advertised, I'll contact the paper tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
And just, I left everybody their oath, if they can get it back to me, please, and anybody who had a packet from the clerk's office, the last page is your code of conduct that you have to sign and get back to me, hopefully by the next meeting. And tomorrow I will send out a list of meeting dates and also the updated roster for everyone by email, okay?
You'll be out of town on Thursday?
Okay, we'll get you caught up.
Thank you.
And I guess Deputy Mayor, we'll just need some direction on what element we should start looking at from the council.
I will be back in touch with you as soon as possible.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ron, any reason to go into executive?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second. Aye.
Aye.
Third.
Happy day.
Planning board is adjourned for the night.
Yeah.